Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting of the Frederick County School Board to order. Today is January 23rd. The time is 4:32 PM. We have an agenda before us. How would the Board like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Hummer, over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So, we have a couple items that we're going to be discussing with you this evening. This is going to be one of many budget work sessions that we will work through. And we encourage you, which I know you will do, but I love to say it, is please ask questions. Please dive into this. Share questions with us ahead of time. Discuss them throughout because we want to make sure that you are well-informed throughout this entire process. And we want to make sure that we get you all of the information that you are requesting. So, please continue to do that. So, if you don't mind going to the next slide, Mrs. Anderson, for me. Thank you very much. So, what we're going to do is we're going to dive into the proposed budget. So, we're going to talk about budget transparency. We're going to take a look at our salary initiatives as well as our proposed upgrades. And for this presentation, there are no action items. So, this is all for information only. So, we're looking forward to hearing your questions. So, with that, I will now hand it over to Mrs. Anderson to walk us through this presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Welcome. So, we wanted to kick off doing a little bit of housekeeping just to remind the team of our deliverables that are coming up. So, as you know, the superintendent proposed on Tuesday night. So, we're going to have several Finance Committee meetings to dive into aspects of that proposal, tonight being the compensation initiative. Our next meeting then would focus on instructional initiatives as well as the operational requests. We have a public hearing coming up in February as well as a joint board meeting with the Board of Supervisors, which is scheduled for February 12th. And then, the next deliverable is a full school board budget work session to follow up at your February 18th school board meeting where you'll adopt your proposal to send to the county for funding consideration. And then, March will spend time updating numbers, providing more information to you on the other funds because during that time, we'll have more information from the state as well as the county. And then, ultimately, leading up to late April where you will adopt the final budget for the next school year. So, I'll pause just for a second before we advance to the next slide to see if you have any questions on the deliverables or the timeline. Good. All right.
Actually, one quick question that kind of pertains to deliverables. So, and thank you, Dr. Hummer, for getting back to me on my questions and Mrs. Anderson, too, before this meeting. Thank you. So, one of the questions that I asked is I didn't see in any of the slides that would be presented today. I didn't see that detailed line item budget. And what I mean by that in school board terms is there's about, I think it's a 13-digit accounting code for every single expenditure in the county. So, if you look at before we came into office, before I came into office, if you look at prior budgets before that time, you would just see this random 13-digit code. And then, beside it would say teacher salaries. And then, an amount would be 7.5 million. And I thought, wow, if that's one teacher's salary, I am in the wrong line of work. So, I asked for some clarification. And at the time, Mrs. Camery said, well, that's the Shirando High School salaries. I said, well, how do you know that? She goes, well, I just know the code. So, we don't speak in those same codes. The general public doesn't speak in those same codes. So, you all last year were very kind enough to put a legend, if you will, in the back. So, when it comes to deliverables, it's my understanding the budget will be printed and uploaded onto our website, the document, the massive 300-page or so document. And it will have that legend in it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And when I say by that legend, so it'll say instead of that 13-digit code, you'll be able to look up that code, you'll see Shirando salaries or you'll see more drilled-down salaries of each department within a school, for example.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Madam Chairperson, may I?
Yes.
Quick question. Will we be able to get a hard copy of it as well?
If you would like a hard copy, we'll get you a hard copy.
Better bring in a wagon.
Say what?
Better bring in a wagon.
I know, right? Yes, please. Thank you.
Yep. We're happy to do that.
All right. So, a normal Finance Budget Committee meeting follows the posted agenda. Any questions that are asked during the meeting will be addressed at the next meeting. All questions, please email to Kristen Anderson and copy Dr. Hummer and Mrs. Klein. The budget numbers are based on the information that we have right now. We will have 10 budget work sessions that are tentatively scheduled. And all salary scales are draft form until the budget is finalized. And in order to be transparent, we do have the superintendent's proposed budget along with the detailed reports on the website and under Board Docs. And each weekly Finance Committee meeting material and discussions will also be posted on the Finance webpage on the Frederick County website. Now, some salary terms. We're going to define those. So, a division average is the percentage is calculated by combining all of the scales in the division, not by each employee or by each scale. The scale average is a percentage is calculated by each scale, not individual. And employees on the scale will not receive the same percentage increase. And then, if it's all employees, the percentage stated is the same for each employee. We have a couple different methods to increase salaries on a pay scale. We can enhance the starting salary, which helps us to attract new employees. We can provide a step movement, which values an additional year of experience that helps us retain employees. Or we could do a combination of the two where we do a scale enhancement and a step movement. A step movement is when an employee moves from one pay level to the next. So, in the example, you'll see if they were on pay level one, they will move up to pay level two. However, step movements are not guaranteed and are only given if there's enough funding approved through the budget process. And now, our five-year salary strategies are to remove the years of experience clusters on all of the pay scales. We want to provide scales that max out at 30 years of experience. Provide a competitive starting salary to attract new employees. Provide our most experienced staff with a competitive increase. And to provide a salary cost of living adjustment each year.
We considered all those goals to arrive at a compensation initiative as Dr. Hummer proposed on Tuesday night. So, the proposed salary initiative is a division average of 4.9%. And there, you can see on the slide how that translates into pay scale averages. We have four major pay groups of employees that you see on this slide. And you can see the proposed scale averages for each of those groups. But we're going to dig into the details of each group. You've seen this comparison before. And one of our salary goals is to continue the year of experience on clustering on pay levels. And Dr. Erskine, last week, you had made the comment about a teacher at the 15-year mark reaching their stride. Well, that's where we have a number of years clustered together on a pay level. So, that goal, over time, will help us accomplish closing that gap there. And then, you see at the 25- to 30-year benchmark years, that's intentional. You know, our goals of adding that $5,000 pay supplement this year for teachers with 25 or more years of experience because we want to keep our experienced teachers with And also, another one of our goals is to increase the starting salary so that we can better compete with school divisions around us. This, we know that Loudoun County is compared in our average regional comparison. And you can see there by the benchmark years, the difference of our pay scale to Loudoun County's. And what this proposal does not do is match Loudoun County because we know that we can't do that. And just for perspective, to match Loudoun County's pay scale, it would require $30 million. I mean, it's a huge investment. So, we'll start with the teacher salary initiative. As you can see there, it's just over a $5.4 million investment if funded. Scale average of 4.9%. That does not mean that every teacher would see a 4.9%. At minimum, our goal is for all teachers to receive a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, which is set by the Social Security Administration. And we know that Governor Youngkin has proposed a 3% compensation initiative for instructional and support staff. So, there you can see in the first two lines that add up to that 3%. That additional 0.5% would allow us to enhance the teacher pay scale. And then, lastly, you see just over 2.1 million of that initiative. We can meet some of our salary goals by increasing the start to 54,000. It would allow us to uncluster another year of experience around that 15-year mark. And employees would receive a step as well as we could expand that $5,000 pay bump to teachers with 24 and more years of experience. And at the end, we'll show you what that looks like on the salary scales for next year. So, moving on to the classified group, these are hourly employees who are eligible for extra and overtime pay. So, it includes our instructional assistants, our custodians, school nutrition staff, bus drivers. You can see that it's a proposed scale average of 5.6%. Again, that does not mean that every employee would receive 5.6% at just over a $2 million investment. Like the teachers, at minimum, we want our staff to get a 2.5% cost of living adjustment as well as enhance those scales to get up to the governor's 3% initiative and continue our salary goals there. With this investment, it gets us closer to the minimum starting hourly rate of $17 an hour. I think this scenario gets us to 1680 as the minimum start. As well as, we have years of experience clustered together on these scales as well. So, it will allow us to uncluster one year of experience and give those employees a step movement on those scales.
Mrs. Anderson, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. For the 177,632, the half, is that the half percent? The half percent, 0.5% equals 177,632, which brings us up to 3%?
Added to the 2.5% COLA, yes.
Which brings it to, okay. So, the 2.5 is the 888,158. The half percent is 177,632. Got it?
Yep.
Which then, all right. And then, so the state is coming in at 3%. We're bumping it a half percent to the tune of 177,632 that we would be asking from the county.
Not necessarily because to fully fund the 3%, the 2.5 and the 0.5, the state would have a share of that. So, we do have a slide at the end that will show that to you.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
So, moving on to our other professional scale, these are psychologists, our speech pathologists, occupational and physical therapists, as well as some information technology professionals. Similar to teachers and the classified, the 2.5% cost of living adjustment as well as the 0.5 to get up to the governor's 3%. And also, the 97,202 would allow us to uncluster a year of experience on those scales as well as provide those employees a step movement on the scales. And please, if I'm moving too fast, don't hesitate to stop me. And then, lastly, the administrator supervisor and coordinator group. Similar to the other scales, at minimum, we want employees to receive a 2.5% COLA. There, you see the 0.5% to enhance the scale to get up to the governor's 3%. And like the other scales, then there's 80,212 to uncluster a year of experience and provide those employees a step movement. And that scale average is a 3.4%. If there are no questions on that piece of the compensation initiative, we can dive into some of the pay upgrades that are proposed. So, first, we have a pay upgrade that is proposed for our instructional and bus assistants. And this pay upgrade would move them from the current classified C2 scale to the next scale up, classified C3, which equates to about a 6.4% increase, which would be in addition to the compensation initiative that we just talked about before. And this is being proposed because of the responsibilities that these individuals hold. It also will help us better attract to fill these positions. We currently have 11 bus assistant vacancies. And those bus assistants are super helpful to our bus drivers so our bus drivers can stay focused on the road. And then, our instructional assistants, this is to reward them for the responsibilities that they're currently doing as well as they're stepping up to provide classroom coverage when we can't get enough substitutes to fill in.
Mrs. Anderson, can I just address one piece of this bus assistance piece? So, one of the things that I wasn't expecting when I joined the Board and one of the really great pieces of feedback that I've gotten and shared with Dr. Hummer, even really back in the summer, is about bus assistants. And I think it's one of those positions in the school system that not a lot of people realize how much these folks do. If you're ever around a bus with special needs students on it, the amount of work that a lot of these folks put in getting folks on and off of the bus who have issues with mobility, these bus assistants earn their keep. It is a really tough job. And it's also a group of people that have a lot of one-on-one interaction and influence with kids. And so, I'm really happy to see that you guys have this in here because this is a critically important piece of keeping kids safe. It's really not babysitting. And I've come to understand, especially with friends and neighbors as bus drivers, they depend deeply on these bus assistants to help them do their job well. And so, I'm really happy to see that this made it into the proposal.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, may I? Just a question, and you probably have told me this before, but I want to make sure I understand it. I know we have trouble getting substitutes, correct?
Correct.
Are we having trouble getting people that want to be instructional aides or are we able to get more of those in?
We struggle to fill some of those positions as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question, Madam Chair. Instructional assistance here, does that also include special needs instructional assistance or is that different? Is it just the broad-term general education instructional assistance?
Both special and general education.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So, our school security officers, we currently have five of those positions. And based upon the results of the salary survey, this proposal proposes that we upgrade them from the C4 to the C7 pay scale, which is a 13.1% increase. And again, to be more competitive there. And then, lastly, we have the proposal to repurpose our middle school lead teachers to deans of students to support student discipline and school administration. And what this will do is help the principal focus more on student achievement. And the cost that you see here takes those positions and upgrades them from a current 10-month to a 12-month contract.
Madam Chairperson, I have a question. With the $60,000, I'm assuming that that's spread out over all of the middle schools and not the starting salary or salary of the person?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's for the four middle schools, yes.
All right. And how would that be allocated? Is it based on a number of years? Is it based on experience? How's that allocated to the individual person?
To the individual person, it essentially takes their salary, which is currently based on 10-month, and multiplies it by 12.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just one more point of clarification. We already have one or more of the middle schools who had dean positions. Lisa Booth was in a dean role. There's another one that I can't account for of the four.
Just the one.
Just the one. So, this would put them all on par as having a dean instead of just one.
That's correct.
I'm a little partial to this, given that it was one of my old jobs. And so, I'm happy to see that this is going to be equal across all four of our middle schools. This is how we keep good people. We have some really fantastic new people in this role this year, and I would love to see us keep them. I think part of that is if we're going to ask them to do the job of an administrator, we need to pay them that way. So, thank you again for this.
And Dr. Erskine, if I may add, I'm sorry, question. We are also in discussions about how we build and strengthen our own administrative pipeline. So, as we begin to think about our bench and how we ensure that we have highly qualified administrators, this is that entry step for us in terms of making that work.
Madam Chair, so, I'm just spitballing here. But I would like to see our instructional assistants and our special education instructional assistants be broken out and maybe paid a little bit different. The reason I say that is, all things being even, the job isn't even. You know, there's a lot of behavioral issues and extra work that goes into the special ed program with those instructional assistants and visiting those classrooms and stuff. I've seen the work that they do, not taking anything away from the instructional assistants and the general education environment. But I know that it's probably, I refer to Ms. Freckley here, I bet it's a little bit harder to keep, recruit, retain everybody that's in the instructional side on the special ed side. And that would incentivize people to get those certifications to come into that classroom as well. I mean, those people are paying for their certification. So, I'd like to see something where we could break that out a little bit different. And if it's already in here, if I've already, oh.
I was going to say, Madam Chair, we did that.
Okay.
We're going to get to that, Mr. Atkins. Great question, and we agree. So, that's why it's coming up here shortly.
Good deal. You guys are mind readers.
Thank you, sir, for your support.
So, to what Mr. Atkins was asking, our proposal also differentiates our Level 2 special education teachers and instructional assistants.
My spidey sense was going off.
So, here, what we're proposing is that those Level 2 teachers receive a $3,000 pay supplement and the instructional assistants an additional 1,000 compared to their peers. And again, that's because it's our most critical need.
Madam Chair, I do have a question about that. With respect to this assistance in the general ed, they also have to work with 504 and IEP students. And I'm wondering, how are we going to sell this to those teachers who are gen ed and still have to work with special ed students in IEPs and 504, well, IEPs versus those that are specifically special ed?
So, keep in mind that these are our Level 2. So, these are going to be our students with the most significant needs. And I would advise, and we did talk a lot about this last year, is all of our teachers are working hard. So, we want to, right, and just to your point, so we want to make sure that we're careful comparing people based on the work that they're doing. It's more based on the level of training they need, based on the day-to-day. So, for these two groups of individuals, there is a lot of additional training that they are required to have. We also recognize, yep, yep. So, we do recognize that general ed teachers and Level 1 do have some of these students as well, but not as significant. And we believe tearing it out, like Mr. Atkins mentioned, will really help with that critical need. Now, if the data suggests that that switches and Level 1 is where the significant need is, we'll have that conversation. Thank you, sir. Yep.
All right. If there are no other questions, we'll move on. So, Mrs. Klein, back to your question. The state budget, Governor Youngkin currently includes a 3% compensation supplement for both instructional and support positions. So, just a 3% salary initiative would cost five, just over 5.1 million that you see there on the slide. And the state's share of that would be just over 2.3 million. And then, the difference is what we would ask from the locality to make that 3%.
So, essentially, this is an unfunded, not a mandate per se, but an unfunded 3%. Like, if it was actually coming all from the state, then it would be 5,159,199 from the state.
Correct. But it runs through the local composite index.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Yep. And so, there's some supplementary information that's posted to Board Docs. We have a summary of the superintendent's proposal as well as we currently have by account code, the baseline budget. But to Mrs. Klein's point, we're working on the bigger report that has the legend that she spoke about. And it's our goal to have that posted by January 30th. We also have draft salary scale information posted to Board Docs. I wanted to take a moment to walk you through the teacher scale, just so that if you have any questions that you can ask us. The other scales are also posted of what they could look like if this compensation initiative was fully funded. initiative was fully funded. Can everybody see that okay? So what you see here to your far left is the teacher pay scale for the current year. And then, as we work our way over to the right, you'll see scenarios A, B, and C, which correspond to the levels of what we talked about, the breakdown of the initiative. So scenario A next year is if the proposal was fully funded for teachers of 4.9% pay scale average. And then scenario B is if only 3% was funded. And then last one is just if the cost of living adjustment was the only thing that was funded. And we like to show you all three scenarios so that you can see the impact of the scale, where we're able to accomplish salary goals such as unclustering a year of experience or increasing the start, as well as this gives you a perspective where you can see how many of our pay levels have multiple years clustered on them.
Ms. Anderson, can you scroll up just a little, and then a little to the left? Actually, don't. I think that's good. Actually, just a little bit to the left.
Okay.
I'm curious what the 2.5%. That's 53. So looking at year one under the first scenario, because it seems like from discussions with Ms. Frekley and her team, we lose teachers at the years one through three, and then we were losing teachers last year at the 15-year and the 25, the top end. So I am very passionate about getting our starting salary up, and I noticed that the school district within a rock throwaway from here is at 53,000 starting. So I would really like to get that first-year pay beyond that. So it looks like A will do that. And then, with the COLA only, it looks like that is...
With the...
Oh, I see. I see, okay. I get it. Okay.
With the COLA only, we can't advance employees a step, so it creates another year of experience cluster.
Got it. Okay, I see that now. Okay.
And I realize this is a lot of information to look at at once, but certainly let us know if you have any questions after you've had time to reflect.
Good question, yeah. That's a good question.
Oh, yeah, so, just curious and spitballing, once again, just as we're working through the work session. If we're losing teachers one through three, I'm betting that it's mostly at three, why are we not breaking up the cluster of three, four, five, and six?
We can, but it costs more money, because you have more teachers that would benefit from that enhancement.
Madam Chair, if I can add to that thought there, Mr. Atkins, that's why it's imperative that we think of this as a three-to-five-year project. We can make that shift, but it is going to be more than the 8.6 that we had requested, which, as a board, you guys can add those items on, because we did talk through that.
We did.
And we wanted to get this budget palatable enough so that we felt that we could get the dollars that we were requesting, but we're hopeful that we can continue to chisel away at this. As I was sharing with Dr. Erskine, we've made a lot of progress and strides with this, as we've looked at it as a plan, rather than just doing it all in one year, so.
Right, okay.
I mean, it just, I'm looking at our current year, and we got 12, 13, 14, and 15 is clustered. We break it out for 12, 13, 14, 15. I hate to make you keep scrolling. Can you scroll back to the left just a little bit?
Let me go...
This way?
And I understand it's 154 teachers versus 263, significant number, 100 teachers. But it's also, they're also making more money as well. What if we kept the 12, 13, 14, 15 together for this year, and then broke out maybe the third or the sixth, to see what that would look like? I mean, I would, is it that much more, or is it, could we even be saving? I don't know.
We can follow up at the next finance committee.
Yeah.
Show you what that would look like.
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
Sure.
That's the whole point of this process, is we want to take a look at different requests and put that in and show you what it'll look like. More than likely, it'll be more, but if it's savings, great. So absolutely, we can do that. Yep.
Like, even breaking out the three, the third year, because it could be, could be lower, and we wouldn't carry that much of a burden, or the taxpayers wouldn't carry that much of a burden, and then keep 12, 13, 14, 15 together.
I'll just, I'll just offer that we chose to go around that 15-year benchmark, because remember, the comparable to our regional average, that's where the gap was the greatest around those benchmarks.
No, I get that. I get that. Trying to bring people in, where we can keep them with our culture.
Yep. That concludes our presentation, unless there are additional questions, or if you wanted to look at the other scales.
Madam Chair, can I just ask you a question? Back on slide 12, this is, has the county comparisons. One more.
One more?
Yeah, four words, sorry. There we go. So at risk of reminding everybody yet again that I'm the new guy, I want to ask a question just from something I'm noticing here. And I don't know if this is something that is a historical precedent, or if it is something that is, the gap is maybe growing. When I look at this, I see school divisions that are substantially, substantially less economically well-off than us, paying their teachers better. And I'm curious why that is. If it's historical, I will totally accept that as an answer. If the answer is, we don't know, that's also okay?
Well, no, we know. We, as a school system, are bound by the dollars we get from the state and the locality. And we'll leave it at that. We, because of the conversations we've had of looking at the COCA line, comparing us against the Loudoun, the Prince Williams, the Fairfax, we are up against that. As we move this up, as we've just spoke about, it's more money that we are going to be requesting from the locality. And we could shift money to increase that, but then we have to decide what those priorities are and what we want to cut in order to stay within a dollar figure. And that is why it is imperative, and that is why I pushed it for us to collaborate with the constituents and the Board of Supervisors to talk about our needs. And I'm looking forward to our work session in February, as we continue to work through those aspects. We've also, you know, the recession did not do us any favors. You know, we're still recovering from that back in 2009, and there were years, because we had this request and we shared it, where teachers and staff weren't getting any pay increases, and it was minimal if we did have any. Now, we're far away from that, but that gap continued to grow when you compare us against other professions, which I shared with you, all the J-Lark study at the state level has definitely reflected that as well, because the state has also identified that there are areas they need to improve, and then it has pitted us against the locality, because if the state's not giving us the money, we have to get it from somewhere. So it's a combination of complexities, to wrap that up. So yes, that is the reason.
And keeping in mind, too, we're also talking about $1,000 difference. We're within striking distance of places two through five. So I don't want to make it sound as if we're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars per person. But I guess it just jumps out at me, because Shenandoah and Warren, these are not locales with higher tax bases, with more resources. And so I hope that the public does see this as they start to digest some of this information, because we're not, we're not currently asking to move into rank number one. We're at the bottom. And so I think that's just worth keeping in mind, because I don't think that the kids in Frederick County deserve less, and that the teachers deserve less than places one through five. And I know there's also a great deal that goes into education that's not necessarily salary-based, but our attrition and our turnover rate is high. So I think it's at least worth thinking about and digesting if, as a community, we're okay with staying in the sixth spot, because I'm not.
Well, I think, too, a lot of, I've heard two different arguments on this, or two different perspectives, I should say, is you've got the, the one side says, well, teachers should do it because they love it, and that's, that's that, all the intrinsic emotional reasons. And then you have the other side saying, absolutely not. And what I, I try to take the emotion out of it and look at this as numbers, and I even try to take the heading off of this and put it in as just employee A, or employee type A, these are the salaries for employee type A. It could be a pilot, it could be a ditch digger, it could be a construction worker, it could be any person that is in need. Teachers are in need. Teachers are a in-demand occupation. The supply does not equal the demand. When supply does not equal demand, you have to pay those individuals a decent living wage in order to attract them to your locality, whether they are a teacher or any other profession. This is not just about teachers being teachers. This is about a professional that we need to hire, that this business needs to hire to effectuate our mission. That professional happens to be a teacher, and we need to pay them accordingly, just like any other business would. And we're not, so that needs to change. Soapbox done. We can now move on. Thank you.
We have time, so if you have additional questions, we're happy to...
That's all we have for you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, you all. This was really great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I've also been sending a lot of emails and questions to Dr. Hummer and Mrs. Anderson, too, and you guys always go out of your way to answer those before these meetings. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Well, that concludes our agenda. How would the board like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.